Seven o'clock, I have a call order, the July eighth, two thousand twenty-four, Oxford Township, Chair of Townshipal Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, um, everyone please stand, pay respects to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note, Groll.
Noted, there is a forum.
A forum, motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, on favor say aye, aye, opposed. Moving on to item five, the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of April eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Approval of the minutes of April eighth, two thousand twenty-four, regular meeting minutes.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second, motion in second, on favor say aye, aye, opposed. Moving on to item number six, which is public comments for items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business, item seven, seven A, case twenty-four, Z B A zero zero three. Property is located at six forty-three, South Lapeer Road, Oxford, Michigan, parcel oh four, twenty-six, three oh three, zero one two. The applicant is applying for certain variances to be eligible to install a commercial sign that has automated car wash. The applicant seeking variances from section eighty-five, A, zero zero one of the Oxford Township ordinance, where a setback requirement of fifteen feet for the installation of a sign, and there is a maximum required height of six feet. The variance requested are as follows, one, setback of the sign to be nine feet to the road and five point five feet from the adjacent lot line, as opposed to fifteen feet, and the height of the sign to be eleven feet, as opposed to six feet. How our meetings are run, I will introduce the items, I did, um, the applicant will then present their case. Uh, as Zoning Board of Appeals member, have an opportunity to answer any questions or ask any questions. We'll open, the public comment will be opened, all comments should be directed towards the chairman. Um, public comments will be limited to three minutes, I'll close the public comments. Board member questions, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to those. Um, board member will then deliberate, there'll be a motion, and then they'll be invoked, so, the floor is yours.
That's awesome, thanks for coming, I thought you said, sorry to bring you here on a summer day, but I, I had to get this done. As you guys could tell, you guys, I don't know if you guys used the car wash, and if you used it over, over there on Lapeer Road. But, uh, when they built the building next to me, I really wasn't opposed to, I did bring up, you know, my objections, it was, it was gonna cover more of my building than it, than it already did, and my building is, is under the new setbacks, they're all under the old setbacks. So now, and then the trees went up too, and I called, uh, Jack, and said, Jack, I can't, with, with the trees going and this going, I, this is none of my doing, and to top it off, there's a new car wash down the street, so if they miss mine, they're just gonna go to the one down the street. And the one down the street doesn't help me, or doesn't help you guys either, I believe that's the village, I would think that's a different tax base, am I correct on that? Right down the street, they're, they're in a village, Oxford, that's what Jack told me, they're in a village, so we don't get any of their tax dollars for any of our city things, right? And, uh, so yeah, I'm, I'm just under a lot of pressure, it was nothing of my doing that I need the sign. And I took pictures from both sides, and it's really hard to see, it was always a little difficult, but now it's gotten really difficult. And if you pass it up, now I got competition that they can just turn into if they pass up my signs, so, yeah, I, I'm under a little stress for the stuff, for the people to see the building, we have customers complaining, as we drove up today, my wife missed, missed it. So, yeah, that, that's what I'm, I'm up under, and I'm, my signs actually would match up to where, uh, Louise is with the Realtor group, right there, same type of sign, and the one that where the party store used to be there, that, that sign there is the same type of sign. I just want the same, same variance they have, so people can see the, the buildings.
So, for the record, can you just give your name and address?
Yeah, um, our name is Jettow Collage, and it's my white, Karen's collage, we're the owners of six four three, South Lapeer Road, Al's Auto Wash, Oxford. And, uh, we live in, uh, Washington, Michigan.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it, yeah, I, I, I did talk to Jack first, I go, Jack, I'm, I'm not asking for a lot, I just, I, uh, I'm under a little duress here, I need, I need, uh, clear, clear signage for, for everyone, even, you know, the Oxford residents, and also people that aren't from Oxford that use their wash, to make it a, a lot simpler.
All right, with that, I will open the public comment, is anyone in the public that wishes to come and speak? Hearing none, we will close the public meeting, and bring it back to us for questions. Or do you have any questions for the applicant?
That old sign, where you have your old sign, is it possible to put a pole sign there?
That's where we're gonna put it, that was just a, a temporary one, that we had put up, and, uh, I don't know if you guys remember the semi, thankfully, the middle, and I ran, ran right through there, then when I looked, I don't know how that, if it was from the previous owner, how, that, that sign, I don't think was ever quite approved, but that's exactly where we're gonna put it.
I had a question on your drawing, you provided to the board. Uh, you got ninety-five foot of frontage there, right? And I don't see the, uh, the Open County Road Commission right away, line on that, do you know where approximately that is?
I, I don't, you know, and, uh, I know our sidewalk is set back further than the other two, two sidewalks, you know, when they made that turn, you know, because they extended, we now have a middle lane, and they, they assured me, and what the engineer did for Oxford and the, uh, the county, and they, they kept that, that turn the same for me.
Yeah, the gateway map has it pretty much set along there on the sidewalk, sidewalks on the inbound of the right of way, is what it appears to be.
Where on that curb. How long have you, um, been in this building, and I know you remodeled it a number of years ago?
It's a pretty new building, I've been in it about seventeen years, Al DeCipio built it, like, eight years to ten years before that, so it's not that a real old building, you know, there's.
They, they had to change some of the drive and the, the way the, the vehicles flowed in that, that property back then.
Back, uh, they never had to change it, they had to change it to what, uh, before it was built, from what I understand, from the site, yeah, they, we wanted an entrance, and it, yeah, so it's already kind of a tough turn, you, you do, you know, you're making, it's already a tough turn, and then now you can't see it, and once those trees bloom, it's gonna be really, you know, difficult.
That's why I'm asking, right, and, and I don't know what the history there is, but I see only one entrance, and really, you're using the, the adjacent properties as your exit, coming out of your
It's really, that's, uh, part of that is, uh, my property too, yeah, but they made it that way, the state.
Like down that drive, is that?
Yeah, they, I think, well, if you go where the curb is devised, my building, that's actually my property, or, but it's more my, I put my, uh, dumpster there, on there, and that, that is our
You, you went on the other side of the curbing next to your
Correct, yeah, 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 so i- it is, it is a tough turn to begin with.
Do you know any of the history of why you couldn't put two drives there, in and out?
Well, we've been fighting with M dot, M dot said they put the stop to it, our, uh, Al's attorney, and then me and Bobby next door, Louise's son, we've been trying for years to give us an entrance there, even like when the, the dispensary for the marijuana house is coming, we talked to them at that, they just will not, the Michigan Department of Transportation will not give, give us. Yeah, that was before me, yeah, yeah. But they've gotten used to it, you know, the customers have gotten used to it.
It's just real tight getting that.
Yes, real tight getting in, it's just right now with that building, here, I took a few pictures to, uh, to show you guys, this is coming northbound, can I, may I approach?
Yeah.
This is coming northbound, you, that's the roof of my building, and you can't, you can see Louise's sign I circled, but I have no sign, here you go, you got, I make up for everybody. And that's what customers are seeing, and those trees are not in full bloom by next year. They will be. Right, that's, that's the top of my building, that's Louise's sign north of me, I'm just like, and then, once those trees come in there, I'm really under, under a hardship. And you can see Louise's sign coming up, so mine, would you be able to see mine?
This is your building, this is my building.
Yeah, that's all that shows my building coming up.
Strawberry across here or something.
See, that's Louise's sign? So that would be right, it would be just perfect, you know, it would really help, it would make that turn.
Do we know if Louise's sign fell under the grandfather?
It did.
It did, yeah, that thing's been there a while. I used to self-chemicalize the car wash, that thing's been there thirty years.
You know, that's, that's, wouldn't be acceptable at this point if it was brand new or, like.
Yeah, 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 but it's just like with this, if it wasn't for the, uh, that, the new building being extended, and, and all the trees put in everything, I wouldn't even be here, but, uh, it's, it was nothing that, that we did, that I did.
Give us maybe some reasoning why you want an eleven-foot, um, high sign?
Well, there too, there's, there's snow coming, and we gotta put the snow, if it's a, that, we put snow on that side, and snow on the other side, if it's real low, it's gonna be hard to put the snow anywhere, you know, and it'll match, there's, because there's, it would match all the signs going up and down the, the thing. I, I can do a lower s- sign, but then I'd probably need a little, uh, room to push it a little more forward towards the, the sidewalk. And it's easier to see coming in and out, to make the left and rights, the higher the sign is, if you get it about this high, it can be harder to see. We even had, with the snowbank, sometimes we have to go out and shut a little snowbank down, so it doesn't get too high.
Is it possible to use the space that you're using for the temporary sign to erect a new sign?
That's what we're proposing, yeah.
Oh, I thought it was back up there, coming up.
Yeah, you, yeah, let me, let me show you where.
You have a pole sign right here, that you're coming up here.
Oh, this one, uh, this one here, that's so far set back, if you look in that picture, you can't even see it, it doesn't help at all. Because of the building, you do, you won't, trust me, you won't see it, if, if I sent you right now, guarantee, I bet you pass it up.
I just know that.
Yeah, you know exactly where it's at, yeah.
Next to the marijuana dispensary.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The existing sign you have there, that's within the fifteen-foot, um, requirement, right? Um, what's the size of that sign that you have there now, do you recall?
I didn't measure it, it's about six by, six by four, something like that.
So, I mean.
It's not even a marquee sign, it, people don't even know about that sign, that sign, I don't even know why they put it there.
When I drive by your place or have, I mean, I see your name, I mean, bold, yellow letters, straight across from roofline to roofline.
That's, uh, that's under the canopy.
That's under the canopy, but this sign.
As you approach, like I said, that's exact, that's one door down from what I, that's what you see, right there, that's exactly what you see when you come up that road.
Yeah, I mean, we.
We, we get, every winter, we'll get people telling us, oh, I never knew it was here, I say, well, how'd you know it was here? Well, we saw the water trail coming out, because you can't see the sign, you know, there's, you know. We, we not, I'd say about half our business is from Oxford, the other half is from the surrounding communities, some even from Metamora and further north. Yeah, it's, and I, I wouldn't be, honestly, I would not be here if it wasn't for that new building and all the trees, there's a lot, they're, and they're gonna bloom, they're, they're doing well, but they're gonna really.
Can you maybe explain or give some reasoning to the board on why you wouldn't use the existing location, and maybe increase the size, or, or use that sign that you have that's existing versus coming to.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's so far set back, and with the two new buildings, they're still under the old setback rules, and then they made the new dispensary gone even hu- further and higher, and then the trees, and then the new car wash, I mean, like, I think if any of you guys were running it, or worked one day, you'd be like, yeah, we're, we're, we gotta help this guy, you know? I mean, even since the trees, we have several customers that tell us, man, what are you gonna do with those trees?
I understand the, the concern with the trees, right, but if you, if you put a sign there, those sign, that sign's gonna get covered up with those trees.
No, it's not, you could look at the sign, you could see Louise's.
Yeah, I, I, I'm looking at.
And then that's, that's one door down, so, once you go on your angle, once you go from that one door down, you go fifteen feet up, you will see it, trust me, I, I look at, I go every day.
One thing about this picture?
Yeah.
It's great if you're walking down a sidewalk.
Yeah, I do wanna go on M twenty-four, you are driving.
M twenty-four, you can see your sign, you can, yeah, this is, this is kind of deceiving.
Yeah, if, if you go over, I drive, I, I look from over here.
I drive it every day, I've seen it.
Yeah.
You can see the sign.
The sign that, that's way back over there?
If you're at the ace, you can see your sign that's near your building as well.
Yeah, the ace, because you got the better angle, correct, the, the picture I showed you, that's going northbound, yeah.
You're going southbound, right?
No, that's going northbound, right through that picture.
When you're driving southbound.
Yeah.
You can see your sign.
You could see it better going southbound, correct, yeah, most of the problems, having, with the new, most of the problems going is, is northbound, it, it is.
No, I understand, but you can definitely see it further down north of your facility, coming southbound.
Because the angle is, is probably twenty degrees different, you know?
Like, like, like the chairman bothered pointed out, your picture, if you came and took a picture from.
Yeah, I thought about it, but if you're in a right lane, Mr. Chairman, you, you can't, if you, it's hard to see, you, I don't know if you can see it right there, if you can see it at all from the right lane. The more you get towards the left, the more you can see it, but you're not gonna drive down, down the center lane, yeah.
I mean, typically, for those commercial zonings, you're gonna have, for the adjacent property in the south, you'd have a twenty-foot greenbelt, is what's required. So you're gonna have to put trees along there to re- re- sign. So, I'm just wondering, if you have that twenty feet, and the trees are planted in the center, that at ten feet, trees are gonna grow, right? But if you have that sign, isn't it gonna be blocked by the trees that grows?
It, n- not as much, too, because as you get closer, that sign is gonna, it, it sticks, it helps, it helps a lot.
My question is, could you put a sign, like what the drawing here shows, with the fifteen dollars on it, on that piece, where, could you sign it right now, sits, what, ground level? It's rounded?
It's an old sign.
It's, it's. Yeah, it's a ground, but it sits about as tall as me and you, yeah.
Okay, so, but if you took, you put a pole sign up, and more illuminated like this one appears to be, because your old sign doesn't seem to be as illuminated as something like this would be.
That sign right there, we could drive there, it, it's not a good-looking size, it, it doesn't, and I don't know why they even spent the money on it, it, if it's on the ground, I'd rather go horizontal than the way that one looks, it's, it's a horrible-looking sign, like, if, uh, the competition, the cleanup sign, I could put something like that lower by the sidewalk, that, that size, you know, that they have, that, that's a nice-looking sign, you know?
Any way to reconfigure that outside radius, to give you some more room, as you come in, you make the turn, right? And then you turn, turn, go to the green light, that arc, that's at your southwest corner.
To enter?
To exit, as you're. Show the graphic here. Any way to modify this curb, you got a little sign in there, a ground sign. Can you tighten the curb up? Pull some tape in.
Oh, is it, uh, there, put it right there, you're saying, what is zero is on sixty? Yeah. 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 That's what I could do, yeah.
Just asking, Washington?
Yeah.
Well, if you.
It's a, it's a long.
Yeah, you're saying, I see what you're saying.
Keep it in conformance, it's, it's a pass.
Yeah, give me the, the footage, the, 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 it's, I don't know, like, I, I don't know what the, your.
Because looking at these pictures, you know, like I was just mentioning him, once these get to be full size, I think they're gonna cover even, even your new sign.
Like you said, you'll be a little angle locked, because you'd be on a road, look at Louise's sign, having the lower sign closer, even closer, you'd be under where these trees are gonna start. Yeah, that's what he's saying, that's fine, yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Sign underneath the tree, the.
Yeah, that's what the intent of where the sign has worked, is why you have it at sixty.
So the sign that you're proposing on here, that you have, is an acrylic, black in the letter, push-through lettering, blood vinyl, double-sided, illuminated.
Whatever you said on there, yeah, 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 so it would be, then I would go a little wider than, than taller, but it would be the same square footage.
This is four foot by five, twenty square feet, or a lot of thirty-two, here, a lot of thirty-two.
Yeah, so I would probably need, yeah, if I could get a little, thirty-two would be a little, yeah.
I'm asking for more reasoning on why you wouldn't go to a thirty-two foot or square foot sign where you're currently located, I don't have any, um, real good reasoning from you or, or hardship.
I don't know what else, what other reason, you, you can't see the sign.
Right now, your sign's not thirty-two square feet.
Oh, yeah, but it's, but it's the angle, that sign, you can't see till you, there's no way, especially with the, the trees.
See it going southbound, I can come, I, I know where you're located, I guess maybe that's why I'm probably at a disadvantage for you, because I already know where you're at.
Yeah.
Now you use your car wash.
Yeah. I believe.
So I know where you're at.
Yeah, and it's different, yeah, she hasn't come up with as, uh, much, and she's, like, I miss this.
Perspective of a new, new, you know, person coming into our township and seeing what your hardship is.
Yeah, because any business, if you depend on a lot of new business, because you, you gain customers, and you lose customers, and any, in a corporation, GM, whatever, you're always trying to gain customers, some moves, some, so we need it to gain customers, and to keep customers, and, and to be safer, and, uh, it's not something I did, you know, it's something that I knew soon as that building, and then I seen all the trees, I'm like, yeah, I'm under, under hardship, no one else is, you know? But yeah, that, it's gonna, with that sign there, you'll notice too, even though you're used to it, you're gonna see, I guess this would be a good reason, you're gonna see, when, if you guys let me put that sign there, you're gonna notice that sign, you're gonna notice the car wash sooner than you do right now. I'd say by a good fifty, a hundred feet.
From what I understand, from what you're seeing, is that you would accept a lesser variance in what you're proposing here.
Yeah, like, if we did on a ground one by there, yeah, 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 right in that spot, uh.
So the height would come out of that equation for the variance that you're requesting, but the location would be, um, something less than the fifteen-foot from the lot.
Lot length, correct.
Uh, like you were saying, it would be very similar, right, just on, on the ground, am I thinking right, Chairman, or?
Yeah, we, we, you know, we've had the sign ordinance, it's a new sign ordinance, we've been pretty consistent.
We waited, yeah, because when I applied, they said, wait, because we're right in the middle of it, you know, so I waited.
Very consistent, and we've probably upset a few people over the years on some signage issues, you know, I know the neighborhood to the north has that sign, it doesn't meet our ordinance requirements, should he ever do something in there, he's gotta put a sign that conforms.
Yeah.
And we've been pretty consistent about not wanting to raise our sign, like, since he consists, over time, I realized, yeah, it's there, but as a business owner, I want you to be successful, we all want you to be successful. So if there's a way to work something out, um.
Yeah, and it, it has a lot to do with safety, you, you guys, once that gets approved, the same gentleman's making my sign, he's making the sign for the, uh, dispensary too. I don't know, I didn't ask him, I don't know where they're putting their sign, but he makes top-notch quality, quality signs, he did, I don't know if you guys go to my Lake Orion store, on Baldwin Road, he made that sign too, it's, that one has a leggie on it, and it's a pretty good-sized sign.
Any other?
What, yeah.
Motion signs?
No.
All right, we're gonna discuss this.
Okay, so thirty-two square feet.
Well, we're, we're gonna discuss.
Okay.
All right, the challenge for this, obviously, of a ground sign, I think we all are kind of, our preferences for ground sign. Right, the challenge we have is what that distance.
And he also mentioned the, the challenges of a ground sign is where the snow is gonna go, right?
Yeah, but this has.
He can work around that. Yeah, I mean, obviously, you can move snow, you can, you know, load it or whatever you need to do.
The original location, that's a ground sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Do they push snow on that?
No.
It's, that, that current sign sits on an island by itself.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it just separates the entrance and exit.
Yeah.
So what are the challenges?
Well, the challenge is gonna be, we really don't know dimensionally, if it's a thirty-two square foot sign, right? Six foot high? Six foot high?
Thirty-two, do you mind, mention twelve foot? Thirty-six.
Or eight by four. Eight by four. So, where can that fit in dimensionally? I don't know. I don't know the answer. I know, I mean, I don't know where that would be, what our variance would be. You know, what, what dimension is the lesser variance?
He's proposing a four-foot wide by five-foot high.
Just, you squat it down, right, and take that sign, push it down.
Yeah.
I mean, take it down.
Yeah.
But I, but I think that, I think where that pole is, if you look at one of the photographs, it's in the picture, that pole, the foundation is, is right against the box, it's not just rocking it to the ground. You'll have to push it south, and potentially push it a little bit, maybe once, to get it fit in agreement, I don't know.
Well, there's already a, a spot there.
Yeah, but it's, it's, the, the pole would be on the foundation.
Bigger than that.
You just can't take it and drop that, cause it's circular foundation, and you've got this four-foot wide sign.
Yeah, you've got.
Yeah, I don't know positionally what we would be granted.
I can't really read that, this is five foot.
Five point oh five feet, and then nine feet, is what, that's for the sign, the top of the sign.
Right.
So if you're looking down, that's the dimension, you can't just, because of the way the sign is placed on that back of curb, it's gonna drop straight down. It would be into the curb. So the only, either A, go and revise that curb line, or B, potentially maybe move it a bit south, maybe move it a bit east, or west, towards the road, make it fit.
Well, it looks like there's more room to the south if you.
I just don't know, I don't wanna, I don't know if, dimensionally, give a number and.
Be wrong. Yeah, and that's five and a half feet from that lot line, right?
Yeah, that's supposed to be fifty.
Oh, right.
Why doesn't it need more here, rather than here?
I think you may be able to come back and give us a, a setback on what his lesser variance could be.
I just don't know.
Yeah, we don't know what the variance would be at this point.
I don't wanna have to have him come back, but I don't know what I would potentially be looking at.
Is this an existing concrete pillar here?
It appears to be.
Where the sign used.
It was used to be where the sign used to be.
Before the.
It looks like.
Cause I thought the original sign was back.
It's right there, see that?
Okay.
That's that.
So that's already there.
That's, that, that is the pillar, so, like I said, you drop that sign down, that sign would probably move forward this way. It may be able to stay there, but you have to come closer to appear, or you'd have to modify the curb line. I don't know what the space is. That's the problem.
From here, first sidewalk to the curb line. Porter John's covering up that sign.
John's.
Is that what that is, the port?
Yeah, that's the job. So.
I mean, I, I would be able to see the sign from this shot.
Yeah, you would, that's what. So.
Four numbers.
Which clutch?
I'm not in favor of going higher. I like the six foot, and I, I think it's, when these trees get another three, four years of growth to them, you're gonna be covering a very expensive sign. I would be more in favor of a sign closer to the, the property line, because it looks like the property line goes in the middle of this.
Yeah.
Grass line here.
Essentially that curb line, you see that, where the hedge is, that's essentially the prop line, what I can tell from the gate.
So even to move that up closer to the property line, but keep the six-foot height, I think would ensure that as you're driving up, three, four, or five years from now, you'll be able to see that sign. I think putting a higher sign, even back here, you'll see it this year, maybe next year, but as these trees grow, I think you're gonna cover it and do a disservice.
That was my thought as well.
I, I. To get the dimensions of what he needs for variance, for if he's got.
The other thing we don't have, we don't know what is here.
There's five and a half, nine is gonna change it, right?
I mean, there's a lot of things, potentially it could be there, it could be electric, it's gonna be water, it's, we think there's some reason. We don't know. We don't know that.
There's no water or electric there.
Where the old sign was?
I don't know where the public.
It's just talking about private easements, potentially. Again, we don't know, I, we don't wanna be in a position to be putting and approving something that goes against, you're not allowed to permanently do that. Again, I don't, I'd like to see more information to be able to give us a number.
I do.
Somebody's on these, I have to go out there, our code enforcement and building department's got to.
This board's not gonna make up a number.
No?
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with variance, moving it much closer to the property line, but staying under the six feet. But yeah, how far off the property this way and this way? Cause then I think it would ensure.
Maximum visibility. No, maximum visibility, you'll have it. It says on the, I don't, you know, you'll see it. Yeah, I'm not in favor of that one, but I, I think, again, like you said, by the time those trees do grow, they will block, they are, appears to be an Armstrong maple, so it's very columnar in nature. It grows up, not out, like most of those trees do. Looks like an Armstrong maple.
So, what do we need to do?
What would you suggest? I mean, we can go, go on this motion here, or we can have him come back and.
I would think we want him to come back.
That's what I say.
Cause I don't, we don't have enough.
Right, right.
I mean, obviously, we're not in favor of any sort of pole sign, so that has to hit the ground, which means it has to move on where the other, or he's gonna modify curb. But.
What about coming back with a new plan for the new sign and things, and get the measurements that they need?
Yeah.
And then come talk to us about, if they, well, it'll only be the variances that would be needed to be.
It would only be for the setbacks.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I would think that.
With a new sign designed and laid out, that we can see.
What setbacks, what, what variance is.
Where we have to set because of the easements and everything.
Yeah.
And then we just have to look at the setbacks.
Cause yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm okay with moving that, just close to the property line.
Given, given the geometry, given the geometry that's there.
Right.
And how that works, I, I think that is somewhat unique in that circumstance, in the visibility issue, right? Again, I get, I mean, signs are important for businesses, but again, you know, I don't, we're not gonna, we've not been in favor of that one, but I signed.
No, I definitely don't want nothing taller, sorry, you know?
So I guess.
When the neighboring businesses have to put in a new sign.
Then they have to follow.
And they have to follow the, the new ordinance.
Exactly.
And if we give this gentleman or the applicant a, a variance to come closer to that lot line, there's gonna give reasoning for the neighbors to do that too, to keep their, their sign out closer to the pier road. We're trying to keep it fifteen feet up.
Yeah.
So I, just, just work for them.
Building's on a new setback, aren't they?
Fifteen feet?
It's fifteen feet.
But, you know, the, the applicant noted that there's, you know, in the line of sight, you're seeing the signs out closer to the pier road, which don't meet the fifteen-foot setback now. So we may be setting a precedent too.
Well, it's, we have to determine if this is unique.
Right.
In the circumstances.
True, no, it's, right.
That's gonna be the thing.
We don't want it to snowballing and become slippery slope.
It varies very well, and I understand the uniqueness of this property, um, but that's something that we may have to explain to, you know, down the road, or have somebody else explain it.
But everybody would, I mean, if you're starting from scratch, you're gonna, if you're straight at this property, putting the sign in your, meeting the requirements, you're gonna complain for it.
Absolutely.
If you were to build this, if you were to build this car wash today, if you build this car wash today, you probably couldn't, because of the setbacks, it would be required, green belts. It's twenty feet, so it almost makes this property un, un, unbuilt. Right, if you apply all the current standards. So. So I think moving towards a postponement, if that's okay with you. Just please come back up. I think you understand our dilemma.
Yeah, so I, I really don't wanna move that curb, so I'd probably rather.
You can go back to your light, I'm sorry, go back to, so you can pick you up, he gets mad at me if you don't.
Oh, okay.
He scowls at me.
Yeah, uh, I really don't wanna move the curb, I'd rather shorten the side, maybe go just a little higher, I don't wanna move the curb, that's, yeah, that's, it's a project.
What we would like is obviously a sign meets the height requirement.
And you said it was six feet?
It's six feet.
Yeah, yes, okay.
If the ordinance requires.
Yeah.
Um, I know that area's kind of curve linear and.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of grass here, so it shouldn't be a.
Find a place for it where it fits, the best that it can.
Yeah.
Um, we would like to see as close as possible, fifteen feet. I mean, I realize you wouldn't like to remove the curb, but, you know, sometimes we may have to do stuff we don't like. So do the best you can, I would say.
Yeah, there, there's quite a bit of, of grass over there, and on that side, nobody, that's just the exit, nobody really, anyway, they curved it off where I'm putting that sign, nobody can go on that other side of that building, I don't know if you guys noticed.
No, it's all part of the.
Yeah, so there really, it's not gonna be.
It's all green belt up front, so you don't have cars or anything.
Yeah, so it's not.
It shouldn't block that sign and that location.
Yeah, so it's not gonna.
And we're still, we're still gonna, again, review this on the merits of potentially granting a variance, we still have to.
Yeah, yeah, I knew that, yeah.
We're giving you suggestions on what you do.
Yeah.
I don't know what these folks will vote and how they'll vote, but we're, that's, that's our direction to you, so if you can come back with a plan showing what you're doing, sign being six foot high, meeting our ordinance requirement for square footage.
Yeah.
And where the setbacks are.
That's the one reason we went with the, the highway, we knew the other ones, we knew it would be easier as far as the setbacks being up on the pole, that's why we, we thought that'd be easier for us and, and for you guys, you know?
We like ground signs.
What do I know?
And that's just speaking for me, yeah, sorry. So, do you have enough direction?
Yeah, yeah, so, but do you guys have those, like the, the feet and everything?
It's in the ordinance, section eighty-five?
Oh, no, I mean, like where, on my property, where those lines are.
Um, property lines?
You're gonna have to get a surveyor.
Yeah, we have the property lines, but like, uh, but you're saying those are in a, how, how far, it gotta be nine feet, it's from the sidewalk, it says.
Well, the ordinance requires you to be fifteen feet from property line, property lines, right away and.
Okay, all right.
In that space, that greenbelt space, you're gonna have to find an area.
Okay.
That you can put that sign, that.
We'll try, we're gonna do our best, but I, I'm gonna get it through one way or another, I don't care how high, I gotta take it up, I'm gonna get a, a sign there, you know? And, but it'll be a ground sign, if you guys work with me, we'll get it, but I, I, I'll do whatever it takes, whatever I got, whatever court I gotta go to, I will get it done, you know? But, uh, I'll, I'll get the best I can, if I can go a little, a little up, but I, on that, on that plot of grass, I'll, I'll fit it on here.
Okay, um, so I think you know what to do?
Yeah.
Come back with a plan, dimensions, showing.
Yeah, my sign guy and I'll, very similar with just, uh, the drawings.
And I would ask you to find if there are any easements that are adjacent to the right-of-way line.
Water electricity.
Water electricity, cause we don't.
Yes.
We, we don't put these signs in there, so if they create more of a challenge.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to help you.
Yeah.
Actually, I know, you seem like a probably not, but really.
No, no, I know, you got your job, that's fine.
So, with that, you wanna make a motion for a postponement?
I think what you want to make sure to do is to postpone it until a meeting to be scheduled by the building zoning department, allowing for proper notification. Cause I'm not sure what Cheryl's requirements are to re-notice this.
Okay.
So.
I think it has to be fifteen days.
Yeah, just wanna make sure that you don't tie her to something that can't be.
Right.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Who wants to make that motion?
Postpone until a future meeting to be scheduled by the building zoning department, allowing for proper notification.
Set.
So moved.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
All in favor? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you.
So I'll go about the same thing I did here with the new.
Yep, bring back a more detailed plan, showing us what you're looking for.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Dr. Phil.
Thank you.
Moving on to, I got a made, board member comments? Comments? Motion for a chairman?
So move.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed?